Hi, everyone. Thanks for being here. You all are running for Portland City Council to represent District Three. And I'm wondering, let's just start off by having each of you take a minute to introduce yourselves and tell us why you're running. And we'll just kind of go in order of my Zoom screen. So, Kesia, if you wouldn't mind going first.
Certainly. Thank you so much for having me. I really appreciate the opportunity to come and speak with you today. I'm Kesia Warner. I'm running in City Council District Three. And a little bit about myself is that I'm a 25-year resident of the city of Portland. I moved here in 2000. I've built my life here. I have a husband who dedicated his career for 38 years to the city of Portland and the service of the people of Portland. I have a daughter who is a Portland Public School product. And as I mentioned, we have lived in Portland for 20 years, 25 years, and the majority of the time I've lived in the east side. So that's my personal why is that I really am dedicated to the city as a member of the community. But I've also worked for the city and county for 20 of the years that I have lived in Portland. And I've given my professional life as service to the people of Portland, I believe, in service and providing the best of public service that we can to our public. So that's my professional why. I'm uniquely qualified to serve in this role as a counselor for the city in this new form of government. I've worked in transportation, police, fire, and policy and budget. And so my priorities are to provide fiscal stewardship, public accountability, and transparency in decision-making. So I appreciate the opportunity very much, and I look forward to talking more about my experience in this interview.
Great. Thank you very much. Harrison, can you please go next?
Sure. Yeah, Harrison Cass, thanks for having me. I am currently Renee Gonzalez's Policy Advisor, and previously I've worked in the Wheeler administration. But I'm an attorney. I'm a journalist. I was expecting to have a career as an Air Force pilot and officer, but was medically discharged and pivoted into Portland Public Service. Yeah, I'm running because I'm concerned with the status quo, especially with respect to homelessness and public safety. And I'm concerned that viable solutions are not being offered. So I'm hoping to offer moderate and rational solutions that take a little bit of a firmer stance on the issues that are most pressing to our city right now.
Great. Thank you. Steve?
Hi, I'm Steve Novick. I'm an environmental lawyer who, in between stints as an environmental lawyer, spent 22 years in Oregon politics and public policy, including four years in the city council. And I'm running in part because I think that with a brand-new system of government and a brand-new council, it'll be useful to have some people who have not just experience getting things done in City Hall, but the humility that comes with experience. I know I don't have some brilliant new silver bullet idea to address homelessness or public safety. But what I do have is the willingness to dig into the details and get my hands dirty. Well, I might just give a hand dirty, looking to see what can we do that's most effective and cost-effective in addressing our biggest problems. I'll give you one example. The tiny house villages have been very successful, but you talk to people at City Hall and they say it's really hard to find sites for them. But I think that we need to focus really hard on any potential sites. And one thing I asked them about was the city-owned golf courses. I have nothing against golf, but there are big chunks of land the city owned. And somebody at City Hall said, "Well, we were told that there's too many slopes. The topography doesn't work." And then I talked to Rob Justice, a major builder around town, and he said, "I build on slopes all the time, and I can think of three publicly-owned golf courses that are at least worth evaluating." I'm not saying that's the best idea in the world, but I think that's the kind of detailed conversations we need to have about how to address our problems.
Great. Thank you. Angelita, can you go next, please?
Yeah, thank you so much for having me today. My name's Angelita Murillo, or Angelita Morillo, for those of you that speak Spanish. My family is originally from Paraguay, and I moved to the United States when I was just four years old. And ever since I've had a place to choose where I got to live, I have always chosen Portland. It has been in my heart. I just love the city. I love the artists. I love all the things that make us a little kooky and strange. So I'm very happy to live here and to be a part of a community that I think deeply loves and cares for each other. I think that I am uniquely qualified to be in this position because I'm an anti-hunger policy advocate in my day job. I work with people who are on the front lines, the most vulnerable people in our communities, who need access to things as basic as food and shelter. I'm also one of three candidates that has experienced unsheltered homelessness in the city of Portland. I was unhoused for about a year when I was in college, and I understand the barriers and the reasons why someone might not feel comfortable accessing some of the services we have or might be missed in a lot of the outreach that we do. So I have experience not only gathering feedback from community on the policies that we shape, because I don't believe that we should be doing or creating policies without a public process, without involving community, but also because I have experience pushing policy through the state legislature and with USDA, our federal government, with our congressional leaders, working with state agencies like the Oregon Department of Human Services, and making sure that everything is informed by community and also in line with the laws that we need to make sure we're upholding. So I'm really excited to serve under a new form of government, and I'm really pleased that we have a variety of voices that can bring different perspectives that haven't been as well represented in the past. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. And Jesse?
Good morning, everyone. Thanks for including me as part of this. I like to start out telling folks, I'm somebody that grew up very poor and definitely dealt with housing instability. So I bring a certain frame to that. I think there are four candidates actually citywide who have dealt with that. Maybe only three. You've got three on this call today, so that's notable. I went on to earn a master's degree from my alma mater, Portland State University, and I've worked the last two decades around public policy and electoral politics. I had some really neat early career wins, including funding building projects on the campus of Portland State. And because you're a news organization, you rely heavily on Aura Star, which was one of my early career projects as well. I went on to spend some time in the business world, spent both presidential elections in 2016 and 2020 working for Bernie Sanders. In 2020, I had a rule colloquially known as Body Man, where I traveled with him quite literally everywhere he went outside of his house or his hotel room, which, if I look back, track back why I'm running, it was some of those experiences that led us today. I came back here. I immediately re-engaged in the civic process here, became the lead lobbyist to pass something in Salem called Cover All People. It's known as Healthier Oregon now. 55,000 Oregonians have access to healthcare as a result of that. I brought folks from the left, like SEIU, together with folks from the right, like the Oregon Association of Nurseries. In that time, I started working for Oregon Recovers, where I'm the Policy and Advocacy Director by day. So I'm running to work to resolve Portland's homelessness and addiction crises, and on the latter especially. I've got some deep experience that I bring to the table. I'm proud to have been endorsed by more elected officials citywide than any other candidate, including my own state representative, Rob Noes, County Commissioner Julia Rem Edwards, a bunch of others, and organizations such as United for Portland and the Portland Association of Firefighters. And by the end of this call, I hope I can add the Oregonian to that list as well. Thanks so much for having me.
Great. Thank you very much. Let's see. Harrison, if you can go first on this question. Tell me what voters in your district are telling you is their top priority, and what would be your solution to addressing that?
Well, yeah, top priority is a combination of homelessness and public safety. I know that from my time at City Hall and on the campaign trail. And yeah, I want to be clear that I'm not running just to represent District Three. I think of this as a governing body that is responsible for all of Portland and across Portland. These are the issues that voters are concerned with. With respect to homelessness, I would like to prioritize funding tasks in SRV sites and providing shelter to everyone. And I want to be clear that once shelter is available, we need to enforce the unsheltered camping ban. We cannot allow people to continue camping on the streets of Portland. And that relates very closely to what I call 1B, the 1B priority. That's public safety. And my priority there is funding and staffing more police officers.
Great. Thank you. Steve, how about you? What are voters telling you is their top priority? And you're muted.
The top single priority is the homeless camping crisis, but also the sort of overarching concern about how is our money being spent? Because a lot of people feel like we voted for all these taxes and we don't see any results. So I think that one thing we need to do is be very transparent and also talk with the county, which has all the money for homeless, by being transparent about what's money being spent on and what's actually effective and what are things that might not be as effective that we should maybe think twice about. Julia Rem Edwards, I think, has been very good about that, and I'm proud to have her endorsement as well. And I look forward to working with her on these issues. As a couple of us have said, the tiny house villages seem to be a good investment. One thing the county spends a bunch of money on that I'm not saying is a bad idea, but I think it's worth doing the analysis, is temporary rent assistance to keep people from falling into homelessness, which sounds great, but there's some research that shows that it's virtually impossible to determine who exactly is going to fall into homelessness. So you have to give money to a lot of people who are at risk in order to prevent a smaller number of people from falling in. So I think that's the kind of trade-off analysis that we need to be doing, and we need to be doing it in public.
Great. Thank you. Angelita, what are you hearing from voters in terms of the top priority?
I think the top priority that I've been hearing is actually housing affordability, which I think is deeply tied to our homelessness crisis. People who are predominantly renters, District Three is quite a dense district with a lot of apartment buildings. A lot of folks don't have affordable rent. And I think that the city of Portland has a few approaches that we need to take. I think for one, we need to look into AI software like RealPage, which is being currently investigated by the federal government in order to ensure that landlords are not artificially inflating rent prices. We also need to build more affordable housing units in our district and across the entire city. We don't have the amount of housing necessary to actually keep the prices down. I'm also hearing a lot of concerns around childcare. And that's primarily happening from mothers, parents who are single parents. And I've seen that directly intersect with our homelessness crisis because especially people who are in domestic violence situations are unable to leave because we don't have very many shelter spaces for people experiencing domestic violence where they can leave that same night and go somewhere safe. And I think I would love to see more things like Bridge Meadows, where we have intergenerational living communities, where there are people of all ages living in one building. They take care of each other. You have elders being taken care of who are normally isolated and alone. And you have children who are getting the kind of community and care that they deserve. So I would love to see a more imaginative approach to housing that includes addressing a lot of the zoning changes that prevent us from building new innovative housing with what we currently have. And the best example I have for that is the Concordia University dorms. I remember when I worked in City Hall, the Concordia dorms were available for purchase. And the only reason we didn't purchase them and turn them into either communal housing or a shelter or something like that was because it was zoned as a school instead of housing. So I think as long as we can be imaginative, we have a lot of good options on our horizon. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Jesse, how about you? What are voters telling you?
Sure. Homelessness and public safety really top the list. And just really picking up where Steve left off when it comes to rental assistance. I think it's a risk to give folks that may not need it. It's still going to be a lot cheaper than rehoming those that slip through the cracks if you're not doing it that way. So it's an important program. Second to that, I've talked a lot about in doing my website, rapid rehoming. If somebody has been in their car for one or two nights with their kid, or maybe two, they can get back into housing and pick up life like normal. But once that car breaks down and they're living in a tent, the kids are maybe gone to DHS. If the homeless person wasn't an addict before, they sure are now, in order to stay awake at night to protect themselves. So it's a pretty nasty cycle. So number one, keeping people in their homes in the first place. Number two is rapidly rehoming folks. And then we also, as a city, have to look at outdated zoning rules and things that are otherwise creating impediments to develop. We need to create around 5,000 units of housing every year in Portland. As of August, we were at 500 starts in Portland. As long as that continues, this homelessness problem is not going to resolve itself. It will in fact get worse. So, and I should just say, when I've been knocking on doors, it doesn't escape me that potholes come up way more than anyone seems to admit as well.
Thank you very much. And Kesia, how about you?
Thank you. So much like the others have mentioned, homelessness is probably the the most prominent issue that keeps emerging when I talk to the public going out, doing canvassing or talking to businesses. But what I'm hearing is more the impacts of homelessness. So I'm hearing about the impacts of homelessness on neighborhoods and the business community. And so some of the specific things are around abandoned vehicles in neighborhoods. Sometimes there's the crime that's occurring around the areas where there's encampments and the just sort of trash accumulation. So it's a quality-of-life thing for a lot of the neighborhoods and the businesses. And so one of the things that I bring to the table is actually developing programs that have addressed these issues. I worked for the Portland Bureau of Transportation as a division manager in 2016. And at that time, car camping and RV camping had really just emerged in the city as a major issue. And we stood up multiple programs. One of them was called the Vehicle Inspection Team, and the other was the Derelict RV Program. The Vehicle Inspection Team was really going out to the individuals living in their vehicles or RVs, so living in the right-of-way and in public spaces, to make contact with individuals that were living in the streets and that may need services. So PBOD employees going out that were trained to work with those individuals and see if we could connect them to social services. And so this is a precursor to the PSR program in a lot of ways. This is almost 10 years ago. And so there was some success with that, and that program still exists, but it needs to be funded at a much higher level than it is now. And then there's also the vehicle, the Derelict RV Program, that was sort of a companion to that. And it was dealing with the vehicles that were non-operational, the RVs that were effectively hazmat sites on wheels that were dumping fluids and sewage into the streets, into the right-of-way, and ultimately the hazmat materials would be going into our waterways. And so in those situations, there was an approach with multiple agencies, including DEQ, in which we identified the sites, we identified the vehicles, and we were able to get those towed to impound lots and ultimately get those dismantled off the streets and abate the environmental hazards that they had created. So my experience actually standing up programs and with the sort of urgency of meeting the moment would really assist in addressing the impacts of homelessness. And that is primarily the issue that I'm hearing when I'm going out and talking to folks.
And Kesia, just a follow-up. Do you know what the success record was of connecting people with services or to more permanent housing?
Well, you know, we had limited success, and I think that's true even with PSR and some of the other programs currently, is that there has to be a will of the individual to go into services. But there was a warm handoff, a whole system of services that had been created. So the network was developed for those that chose to take that, take the offer that was afforded to participate. And I don't recall what the percentage was of those individuals that did come into the programs. But I know with the sort of repeat contact, that there was a higher rate of effectiveness for the program. So what that means to me is that we need to have greater resources that are out there on the street that are working with individuals that are experiencing homelessness or that are living in vehicles so that there is that kind of relationship that's developed, and you'll have a higher rate of efficacy.
Thank you. Steve, if you can go first on this question. Would you seek to keep, amend, or repeal the city's camping ban? And you're on mute.
I don't think that I'd seek to repeal it. I think that in terms of implementing it, I think that arresting people is a last resort. I think it's supposed to be a last resort. And it's after people have given numerous opportunities to move to shelter. Shelter has to actually be available and hopefully humane shelter. And also, I mean, I would think that you should go through a round of, you can't stay here. We're taking your stuff. It's going to be a pain to get it back. But I mean, the first example I saw of the homeless ban being used, it was with somebody, a camping ban being used, is it was somebody who refused repeated offers of shelter, including to a tiny house village. So it did not strike me as a terribly unreasonable and inhumane use of it.
Thank you. Angelita, what are your thoughts about the anti-camping ban? Would you seek to keep, repeal, amend it?
I would seek to repeal it for a few reasons. For one thing, we do not have adequate shelter beds to actually send people. And there are lots of people that want to get into shelter, and they are not able to. I work with a lot of providers who tell me sometimes it can take up to eight months to get someone to a shelter bed when that person is asking to get into one. So if we don't have a safe place for someone to go, I don't think it's fair to send them to jail when their only crime is being poor. And I think by the grace of God, many of us here today are, or all of us here today, I'm hoping, are housed. And I was not so lucky at another time in my life. And I certainly would have been arrested for sleeping on a park bench when I was 20 years old in college, or however old, I think I was around 20. So the other issue is that we have certain sites that are being run by Urban Alchemy. And I have a lot of concerns about the efficacy and safety of those sites, given the challenges that they experienced in San Francisco, the abuse of power between staff and the unhoused neighbors that were actually living in those sites. I trust that there are some changes being updated. I will also say that when I work directly with unhoused people, what I am hearing is that there are some unsafe conditions within those sites that they do not report because they are so afraid of making those reports for fear of losing what little protections they currently have. So until we have humane sites that also give people back autonomy and power so that they are safe to report, so that we can get a full picture of what's going on, I also don't think that's fair. I really think that, you know, I just got a DM as well on Instagram for a bunch of youth who are unhoused, who were just swept from 7:00 AM till 5:00 PM. They were pushed from corner to corner with all of their items, and they were not given any resources or a place to go. That was deeply traumatizing for them. It puts them in an even more vulnerable position. And I think the fact that our unhoused community members are being treated as second-class citizens is something that I greatly and strongly admonish. I believe that they should be treated with the same dignity and consideration as anybody else. So until we actually have viable, good places for them to go, no, I don't think it's fair to criminalize people for the unlucky condition of having experienced poverty.
Let me just follow up on that. In terms of, from what I understand with the camping ban, there has to be a reasonable offer of accommodation available. And so it wouldn't be that there isn't a place to go. There would be somewhere specific. Do you still feel that that is not, you shouldn't be able to require someone to go to take that?
I think that the majority of the options that are being given right now are very high barrier. You're separated from your pets. Sometimes you're separated from your family. If you have, say, you're like a woman with a son, sometimes boys can't go into the shelter. If you have accessibility needs, it can be very difficult. So there's a lot of barriers to the current shelters that we have. So if we're talking about some imaginative future where we have wonderful shelters, where there's no abuse of power between staff or between other unhoused people who may be there, then sure, I guess we can start having that discussion. But I think that right now, that is not our current reality.
Okay. And do you feel the streets are safer?
I think that, in my experience, this is what I've experienced. And I can't speak for everybody because unhoused people are not a monolith either, as we can see on this call. There is the threat of physical intimidation, and there is the threat of institutional power being used against you. And the threat of physical intimidation is more easily dealt with in some ways than the threat of institutional power. If someone wants something from you or wants to hold it over you, and they can find ways to get you in trouble or push you through the legal system in a way that has long-term impacts on you. So I can only answer for myself. Like I said, this community is not a monolith. And if we had more representation and discussions with unhoused people, then we would get a broader answer.
Thank you. Jesse, same question for you. Would you seek to keep, amend, repeal the camping ban? And you're on mute.
We're only four years into this Zoom world. I hope a hallmark of my leadership is compassion. I've always considered myself a very compassionate person, and I hope to do that if I'm elected to the city council as well. So that's how I'm going to approach all of these. I think we have to be very mindful. We have to continue to expand the options that are out there. But at the end of the day, when options are presented and somebody is unwilling to accept them, sooner or later, there has to be a solution there that meets the community's needs. So that's a lot of words to say I'm somebody that reluctantly supported what the city council passed this last year.
And are you happy with the implementation so far?
Well, I do look forward to being involved with the city government that has the foresight to talk to our community partners, i.e. the county in this case. I think they fell a bit flat on their face when they first arrested somebody, but other than that, yes.
Kesia, your thoughts on the camping ban?
So I would keep the camping ban, and short. But to expand upon that, I think that we really need to give all of the resources that we can to be building out the services so that we are able to accommodate those that are moving off the street and are getting the services that they need, so that they can have temporary housing and that they can stay housed and get the services to be able to do that. Just kind of walking back a little bit, I think that we cannot afford inaction. We've had inaction now for, you know, the better part of 10 years and waiting for good solutions. So we do need to take action, and we need to treat our homeless crisis and the related social services needs that come with that, with that kind of urgency that is required. And that will mean city, county, regional partners coming together and building out a system that we don't have now. And you can see with the deflection program model with PSR, and now talking about camping, moving people off the streets, we hit up against the reality that we don't have the network that needs to be developed. And so that really is where I would be placing a lot of my energy as a city counselor, is working with our regional partners so that we can move in alignment and with the urgency so that we are not in this sort of churn that we've been in for the past 10 years and not seeing anything change, and the problems are just fomenting.
Thank you. Harrison, your thoughts on the camping ban?
I support the camping ban. I think we need to do a better job of enforcing the camping ban. What's not appreciated is that 70% of the people we approach on the street and offer shelter to decline shelter. And for them to stay on the streets is so harmful to the city, to children, to disabled, to small business owners. And it's harmful for the people living like that on the street. It's not safe, and it's not sanitary. There are environmental concerns, and it also burdens, are already overburdened, public response and public safety systems. So it is a huge problem, and I can say with empathy, I've been on the other side. For two years, my family's primary residence was somewhere we were not supposed to be staying. And when it was discovered that we were staying there, we were booted. It was inconvenient for us, but that inconvenience is not something that justifies the harms that we are currently suffering as a city in Portland. So yeah, I support the camping ban.
Thank you. Let's see. Angelita, if you can go first on this question, and I think some of you have already addressed it, but I would like to just kind of ask, would you prioritize, should the city prioritize more temporary shelter sites like Safe Rest Villages and task sites?
Yeah, I think that we need, I think my top priority would be to get more long-term affordable housing created. But we also need something to stop the bleeding, so I'm not against creating more temporary shelter sites. I think something that I would be more comfortable and interested in pursuing would be a model based off of Right to Dream Two, where it's an autonomous shelter model where unhoused people have a counter. where it's an autonomous shelter model where unhoused people have a council, where they're able to vote and make decisions for their own community. I think that we've seen really great results for that. I work with those folks regularly. It costs around $65,000 a year for them to run the space that they have right now near the waterfront. They service a lot of people. And as, you know, I've gone to a lot of different shelter spaces and I think in that one, you experience something very different. Because when people are given choice and dignity and there is power removed between people who are staffing and people who are visiting or staying there temporarily while they get back on their feet, you remove power dynamics that make it unsafe. So if we were to pursue more shelter models that way, I would certainly be interested. I do have concerns that we have essentially just taken the indoor shelter model and put it outside and called them tiny villages. And that's not what the tiny village model was supposed to be. It's supposed to actually work differently. And if you're going to have a traditional shelter model, you might as well have it inside an empty hotel or something that the city purchases because then people are protected from the elements. I, you know, I don't want to see the same replicated power dynamics just outside with tents or with tiny homes. They need to, we need to actually address the shelter model itself.
Thank you. Jesse, your thoughts in terms of should the city prioritize more of these outdoor task sites, et cetera? You're on mute.
I'm not even trying, I haven't put an unmute sticker up there after the last time. Yes, I think we should expand this model. I, I, I think we are seeing successes. We are seeing small metrics. And for me, that, that speaks volumes. I, I know we, we all have our own frame that we put on things and I'm going to sound just a little bit goofy for a minute. When we talk about the more of the traditional, the congregate shelters, if I were again dealing with houselessness, I honestly wouldn't consider one of those an alternative. And I know I might lose some votes from frustrated wives all around Portland by admitting this, but I'm a snorer. And I would frankly worry about my safety in a congregate shelter. So I believe through and through as a result of that, creating four walls to put around people, no matter how small and in what we're seeing in task sites and Safe Rest Villages is a way that people can have that sense of safety. So they can sleep and get rest and their rest is going to help their body heal and their mind heal and will help get them back on track. So very supportive.
And is this something that you would have the city pay for or get the county to pay for? Or any thoughts about just who would be funding it?
I think it's city-county partnership as it stands right now. And I think that will continue into the future. So we have to continue to foster that partnership. I think we've seen under the current, under the current city-county leadership, but it's, it's, it hasn't always resembled a partnership. And I honestly believe that with this new city council, we'll begin to restore that immediately.
Thank you. Kessia, your thoughts on task sites and additional Safe Rest Villages?
I'm supportive of additional task sites and the village model. I think that we have opportunities here and we can see how the Clinton Triangle Task Site has had successes. So I think it's replicable. The congregate shelter sites have a lot of barriers and I think that we need to actually build out an ecosystem of temporary housing. Shelters have their, their time and place. And then I think the task sites and Safe Rest Villages have a lot of promise. So I think it's an, it's an entire sort of ecosystem. And just to the point that you had asked Jesse about, I think that we're absolutely needing to develop strong relationships, not just with the city and county, but looking at the state and federal partners to be able to fund this ecosystem that I'm talking about. And I don't want to forget about Metro because Metro also is in the funding game for some of our homeless costs for the region. So I think we need to bring them into the conversation. But I do see this as our shared responsibility and a shared partnership for us to provide this network and this ecosystem of temporary housing.
Harrison, would you, do you think it's a priority for the city to add more of these shelters?
Yes, I was in the Wheeler administration when we were setting up the first one, the Clinton Triangle Task Site. And people likened it to a concentration camp. They called us Nazis. And, you know, we forged ahead and we've seen now two years in that the, the model works. We are improving the quality of lives immediately for, for people coming off the streets from unsanctioned sites into the task site and the SRV. We're bringing them into contact with drug treatment, mental health treatment, things like laundry services. They've got four walls. And we are seeing people promote through the program into permanent housing. So the system works and we need to prioritize funding. It's expensive. We need to scale it up. Like there's 162 beds right now at the Clinton Triangle and you got 5,000, 6,000 people on the streets homeless. The scale's not there right now. The scope's not there, but the system works and we need to prioritize it.
And where should the money come from?
Well, it's, it's an absolute priority. So we'll need to streamline non-essential services, look for, for money from from just about anything else, pretend, potentially PSF. You know, that's something I'm, I'm open to revisiting.
And would this be something that you would seek county funds for?
Absolutely.
But you, but you think the city should go forward regardless of whether it can find that money from, from the county?
Yeah, we, we have, we need to provide shelter for the people on the streets. Yeah, it's, it's absolutely critical. I would like to pressure the county into contributing, but we need to find a way to fund it if, if not.
Thank you. Steve, you've kind of addressed this, but would like to add a little bit more regarding your thoughts on, on additional shelters, who would pay for it, et cetera?
Well, I've already said that I believe in the model. I think what we've heard is that it's a huge advantage for people to have a door they can close, as Jesse said, where they feel safe. Where they have some privacy. I think the money, most of the money has to come from the county. The city has a limited amount of money. So I think supporting Julia Brum Edwards and people of the county are willing to use the money they have to make reasonable investments. I think the city does have a particular role to play in identifying sites where you could put the tiny house villages. So that we can go to the county and say, if you've got the money, we've identified the places, places to put them. I think it's important to note that the city general fund mostly goes to police, fire and parks, all of which are underfunded. So finding money under the couch cushions for the city to invest a lot more is just not practical. I also think it's important to note that we are going to have a homelessness problem for a long time. We have a shortage of tens of thousands of housing units. We can speed up the permitting process. We can continue changing zoning. I was an early advocate of legalizing duplexes and triplexes in places where they're illegal. But given the number of units we need, high interest rates and a general national climate where folks have been much less willing to invest in housing than they were before the Great Recession. The New York Times had an article recently about the housing shortage in Calabazoo, Michigan. We need to stop promising we're going to end homelessness in the next four years. One thing, by the way, that will help us draw investment for new housing is by cleaning up the homeless camps, reducing crime. Because money for housing investment is national. And when people have a perception of Portland is overrun with homeless camps and crime, it makes it harder to bring that national money in. But again, under any circumstances, it's going to take us a long time to address the housing crisis, which means that we have to acknowledge there'll be some level of homelessness, which is why having things like the Safe Rest Villages is critical.
Thank you. And that leads to my next question. And Jesse, I believe you're first on this. Without talking about permitting, because I think there's widespread agreement and it has been for decades, that that is a mess. What would you do to spur housing development?
Sure, I'll give one example that I've talked about an awful lot outside of, outside of permitting. We really should consider outdated zoning rules. The one example that I like to use is we have a ground floor retail requirement where there are no variances. I like to highlight the Goat Blocks Building, 88 Southeast 9th, where I lived in 20, for much of 2018. So I think it was finished the year before that. I went back by there a few weeks ago on my bike. There's about 3,500, 4,000 square foot of space that's still, still just there and empty. That sunk cost that the builder has, that they cannot get income from, they know that going in. I've talked to some developers about this. It was just in Central East Side the other day, the building on Burnside, between Burnside and Ankeny. There, it looked like there must be 10,000 square feet on the opposite of the, the MLK side of that, that is just sitting there vacant. Retail has changed. Amazon changed the world. Folks still need places to drink and eat, sure. But the, the shoe shops and such, they're not going to come back in the same way that they ever were. And the city has lagged, consistently lagged in keeping up with changes in reality. And I think that's something that we could do. That would help save builders a ton of money.
Great, thank you. Kessia, what would you do aside from permitting to address the housing shortage to spur more development?
So I think, like just going back to talking about the sort of economic development of the region. And if we are serious as a city about trying to address the economic crisis that we may enter, if we don't bring more industry into the city, retain more businesses, then we're going to have real trouble with developing our housing stock. So I think this is all sort of the feedback loop. And if we're able to work on our visioning for specifically the central city and have that be sort of our linchpin of planning what our city economic development strategy will be built around. We can also build in housing of, of, you know, all affordability levels. We can build in affordable housing into that plan and we can work towards that. I think that that's just taking a look at the opportunity that we have with a lot of our underutilized and vacant properties that we have around the city. That will afford us, like I said, opportunities to do something different. And I just think that at this point, we're at a pivotal time in the city to be able to be proactive, develop plans that are different and have affordable housing as one of the priorities as we do rezoning, as we replan for the city. And we can build it out as we are looking to do placemaking for the city and redesigning what, what it's going to look like.
Thank you. Harrison, your thoughts on housing and how to spur development?
Sure. I think what we need to just generally build, there's just such an emphasis on affordable housing. But the simple fact is that if we have more housing of any variety, housing will become cheaper. I would like to take a look at inclusionary zoning, consider repealing that and yeah, just encouraging developers to build. I also think, you know, a big part of that is improving our national reputation. And that draws back to homelessness and public safety. We, we need to improve conditions. We need to give people reason to build here. So yeah, that's my, my feeling there.
Thank you. And Steve, what are your thoughts?
Well, as I was saying earlier, as Harrison just said, making Portland a more attractive place to invest is part of it. As you said, permitting is part of it. Also, when you talk to the nonprofits that develop quote affordable housing that winds up taking, you know, $400,000 a unit, they say that one of the problems is they have to deal with the same sort of permitting issues the private developers do. They also have to deal with getting money from numerous different governments, all of which have numerous different requirements that aren't aligned. So that's something I think that we can focus on of the city, the state, metro, hopefully when the Fed sit down and say, okay, how can we make it easier for these nonprofits to build affordable housing? Can we slim down the requirements and we make them align? One thing that folks have talked about that maybe high in the sky is converting some of the downtown office buildings to housing. I know there's a lot of barriers to that, but it's worth exploring it as much as we can. Calgary, Canada actually has made a big investment in converting downtown office space to housing. I'd like to find out what their, you know, what, what their costs are, what their rationale is. I actually was in Calgary for a layover recently and I thought of going up to random people and saying, hey, how do you think that the office space to housing conversion is going? But I was too chicken to do that. So again, in addition to permitting and part of that, by the way, of course, is changing the funding cycle for BDS. You don't have this boom and bust funding cycle. Improving the overall reputation of Portland to invest, I would spend some time thinking about streamlining the process for the nonprofit housing developers and continue to look at how feasible it is to convert some of the office space to housing.
Great, thank you. Angelita, what tools would you look at to help spur housing development?
Yeah, I think that there is a myth that frankly happens that if we can just build our way out of the affordability crisis, I don't think that that's true. And we've actually seen a lot of developers who do come into the city take advantage of some of our, the rules that we have in place for the number of affordable units. We saw that with the Ritz Carlton downtown. They were supposed to provide a certain number of affordable units and then they decided not to last minute. And they ended up just paying the city a meager fee of, I think it was around $11 million, which is nothing for that company. And we did not get any affordable housing into that. So I think that we, as a city, need to seriously look at what places like Seattle are looking into, which is creating public housing. They just passed a ballot measure to create public housing through the city of Seattle. And I think that Portland needs to seriously start investing in housing that is not going to fluctuate at the will of the market or at the will of someone who is more concerned about profit when we have a housing crisis and we have for a very long time. The city also owns a lot of empty lots of land that are going unused. And we know that land is the most expensive part of developing housing. So I would love to see the city streamline a process for, you know, figuring out which lots of land we have, where we can actually build affordable housing and remove that cost. And Steve and I have had this discussion at length, but I'm also interested in looking at the golf courses, not the ones that are natural habitats. But as Steve has so aptly put it, we are in a housing crisis, not a golf crisis. So I think we, we have to look at every resource we have available to us and also make sure that we are holding developers accountable when they say that they're going to provide affordable housing. The last thing I'll say on this is that I think a lot of the current city council has campaigned on fear and trash-talking our city in order to gain reelection, right? And we have a PR crisis in the city as well. Most people that visit downtown, they did that study. They showed that people don't think downtown is falling apart if they actually go downtown and visit. If they only hear about it through the news, then they think it is falling apart, right? There's a disconnect between reality and perception. And I think that we need a city council that's also willing to be a cheerleader for Portland, that it's going to change our public image on the national stage to bring back the, the influence that we need to, to get more housing built. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Kessia, if you can go first on this question, what do you think city council has to accomplish in its first six months?
I'm just going, yeah, that's a great question. And I think I'll just respond to what Angelita just shared. And I, I would just say that we really need to work on addressing some of the crises that we're experiencing, not just as a city, but as a region and be very proactive out of the gate with a plan of how we're going to address homelessness, public safety. And a lot of this is around the reputation and perception of Portland on the national stage. But we need to move with urgency. We need to be very intentional as an elected body with a plan of what we're going to do, because that's how we're going to restore our reputation. That's how we're going to bring back investment into our city, people wanting to move here and visit here. Because I think that Angelita is right about this one thing. People do come here and they say Portland's pretty great. And it is great. But if you've been here for more than eight years, you realize that it could be greater because we've lost a lot of businesses. There are areas of our town that are pretty dirty. It is, the perception is that it is less safe. All of these things have changed over time and we can make strides as an elected body to move on these things and improve them. And if we're amplifying that message, then we're going to be able to bring investments back to our city that will just keep having those returns for us. So that's what I think in the first six months and just not to talk too much about it, but just structurally, we as an elected body need to be able to work well together. And that's going to be a, a really challenging thing for us to do out of the gate as 12 individuals that have campaigned on different issues and may come from different perspectives. And one of the things that I am advocating for is that in this new form of government, that there's a facilitator, facilitating body that is brought in to help this new elected body of 12 come to solutions, how to work through conflict and resolve differences. And I would recommend that that is, I'll just call it like a referee, but some kind of minder that is a service to our elected body for probably at least the first two years, if not longer. But I think that that would make decision-making much more effective, efficient and have our group be able to legislate and provide a policy body for the city right out of the gate.
Great, thank you. Harrison, what are your thoughts? What's, what's? Great. Thank you. Harrison, what are your thoughts? What's, what should city council strive to accomplish in the first six months?
I think we have to stabilize. I do think the transition has a potential to be chaotic. I think the public should be aware of how much disruption there may be. I think as a legislative body, you're, you're probably looking at eight or 10 people without experience, without legislative experience of any kind. So I think we all need to, the new body will need to get on the same page and begin making incremental, perhaps granular progress in all of the, you know, the critical issues we've been talking about. Yeah, nothing's going to get resolved fully in six months, but the body needs to stabilize and be on the same page.
Thank you. Steve, what would you put up there in terms of priorities for the city council for six months?
Well, one thing we're going to have to do is hire a city administrator. And I think that is, might be a challenge because you're asking somebody to be the very first city administrator. The city that right now has a troubled national reputation with a brand new council. So I think we're going to hire, have to hire the best search firm in the country. And the mayor and the city councilors, I think, will have to be directly involved in trying to get people who seem like good candidates to apply. So that's one thing. Another thing is to work on, you know, arrange ourselves as a council, figure out committees, things like that. Another thing is to develop a better relationship with other governments, particularly the county. And the first thing I think we need to do after the election is those of us who aren't going to be in the council, Spencer and I just getting to know each other. It's a lot easier to get past policy differences and deal with them when you have some personal knowledge and respect for each other. I think that we've developed that with a lot of the candidates have been on the trail in District Three. I'm happy that I learned that two of the candidates in District One really like goats and I do too. So we've, we've decided we're going to be the goat caucus and make Portland the most pro goat city in America. So I mean, that might sound silly, but I really, you know, people talk about in Congress that Democrats and Republicans used to have dinner together and they had personal relationships. That's not true anymore. I do think that that matters. I also think that we need to see if we can develop a sort of common ground on the direction we want to take on homelessness, for example. I mean, in particular, do we want to agree that yes, we want to invest more in the tiny village model? And we want to convince the county to invest more in that. And the city is going to make finding more sites a priority. Settings agreeing on some general direction of what we're doing on homelessness is going to be particularly important.
Right. Thank you. Angelina, what are your thoughts in terms of what the city council needs to achieve in six months?
I would have to say I largely agree with a lot of what Steve laid out. I think that finding a strong experienced city manager is going to be the top priority. And it might be contentious given who's mayor, who's doing that selection process. And then if the city council chooses to veto or not, depending on those different priorities. So I think that's going to be a potential hurdle and a really important one to get over. I'm South American, we have fights with people and then we still love each other afterwards. We're very direct and intense people. So I'm not worried about having disagreements with people and having to get through those conflicts. I feel like lobbying for anti-hunger bills. You know, it's par for the course that you're going to have disagreements with Republican legislators or even Democratic legislators, right? Where it's not their top priority or they're worried about funding for other areas. So that's just part of, I think, governance and policymaking. But yeah, I would love to find a, a strong city manager. I, I think we're going to be largely focused on establishing the governing body. I could see it mimicking the state legislature as far as creating different committees. We're going to be really tied up for a bit, talking about if we're even using like Roberts rules and meetings and stuff like that, you know? So I think it's going to be quite boring for the public for a bit there as we're establishing all of that. And maybe that's a good thing. And I, I think coming from a constituent services background too, my deep fear is that people are going to lose connection to crucial services as we're establishing all of this. So I want to make sure that we are hiring constituent services people for the districts that are multilingual, that are deeply connected to the services and have all of the tools given to them to make sure that Portlanders can access those services as we're establishing things. And make sure that we're coordinating with the wonderful folks that work at like 211, 311. And make sure that our constituents are not falling through the cracks while we are working out some of these bigger issues. Because I have seen that happen before and I want to make sure that it doesn't happen again.
Thank you. Jesse, how about you? What are your thoughts in terms of city councils must do's?
Well, I, I sure hope we elect the right folks where we don't need a, you know, the chaperone to guide us through. But then I, then I, then I, then I hear Steve's goat idea and I wonder if we should, seriously, we have the number one thing we're going to have to do. Nobody's mentioned this and maybe it's best unsaid, but we have to elect a council president. Number two, we have to establish ourselves as a new entity of government as a legislative body in the city of Portland that has never had a distinct legislative body from the rest of the government. In that, we're going to be having conversations about staffing levels. I'm on record saying that I think based on the way the city is structured right now, having one personal staffer is probably sufficient. That's based on working around the legislative process for an awful long time and seeing how it works in Salem, which leads me to my next point. I think we should be having a discussion about what the body should look like. Should we have a, a, something akin to the Legislative Policy and Research Office? We don't need, everyone on council doesn't need a transportation policy advisor. Would everyone on council need somebody to turn to for policy advice as it pertains to transportation? I think that, and, and just to shift, I, I think that one thing that I've said widely is we're not going to get six or 12 signature policy accomplishments in the first six months or the first year. What we should focus on are the goals and set our priorities as a council and start working toward certain ideas. It won't surprise me if that's homelessness and resolving that as being the, the top issue. I hope that it is. And then just to end by saying, while it seems like everyone here and throughout the course of the campaign has been very focused on this rule versus that rule. You all know as well as me, how the city spends its money is far more powerful than any particular rule that we have. To that end, we have to, we have to buckle up. We've got, you know, billions of dollars in cost overruns on a water filtration plant. The mayor has already put out a warning about next year's budget because dollars are going to be so tight. We've started an awful lot of ongoing projects based on one-time federal money that is running out. So for me, in those first six months, I will be very focused on the budget because that is precisely how much time we have to pass a new one.
Great. Thank you. I was going to hold off on that question for a little bit later, but you know what? Let's jump into it now. Harrison, as, as just, just mentioned, next year's budget looks like a mess and, and revenue streams and, and actually Steve mentioned this too. You have underfunding of some of the most basic services that the city provides. What would you do to address this budget situation? Would you, you know, are there any changes in the revenue streams that you would, you would seek to make or, or what would you do to just kind of confront the fact that we don't have enough money for all the services that, that we're expected to, or the city's expected to provide?
We'll probably need to take a look and, and cut non-essential services. Yeah, I need, we need to, we need to urgently prioritize essential services. I am, I'm concerned with the, the lack of urgency to fund, you know, police, fire, 911 call takers. And we need to take a closer look at the things that are not related to life or death situations and potentially reallocate. I also, you know, the PSF fund, it's bringing in seven times more than the voters approved. That's a slush fund essentially. We need to take a look at that and dedicate it to when that's, when appropriate, towards essential services. So yeah, for me, it's about priorities and there will be difficult decisions that will need to be made. But yeah, we need to take a look at the life or death situations facing Portlanders.
So what would be non-essential?
Oh, I don't want to commit to cutting anything, but non-essential is anything where life or death is not involved. So you know, our parks, human resources, anything.
Thank you. Steve, budget, what would you do?
Well, I think that we pretty much spend our money in essential services and it's the most of the budget that the general fund goes to police, fire and parks. I think I'm glad that Harrison said that what he would cut, that he said that what he would cut is parks. That is, if you're going to cut something, that at least is real. But I'm not excited about doing that. I think that we need to have, we probably are going to have to take some cuts or we're going to have to be very transparent with the voters about here's how we spend money. It's all essential. If we don't have enough money, here's the things that we have, that we have to cut. I'm not excited about rating PSF just for general government because the voters approved it for a specific purpose. I think that the, the council spending PSF money on transportation investments which are not, you know, pedestrian and bicycle improvements. I'd like to see them make an investment in bus rapid transit and 82nd Avenue. I think making investments that do reduce carbon emissions is including backfilling some city bureau funding is worth doing, but if we're not going to take PSF and start spending on the police unless you go back to the voters and say, we're going to cut PSF and have a new police measure. No, I think it's, I think it's going to be tough. We, it's, it's, it's not like there's free money lying around. I used to say when I was in the council before that when somebody would come in and say, I want a million dollars for this priority. I would ask them, well, would you come to the next budget meeting and testify against the amount of patrol? Because I think the amount of patrol is ceremonial and that's the least essential thing that I see in the budget. The amount of patrol isn't there anymore. There isn't a lot of fat there anymore. So it's going to mean we are probably going to have to make some cuts and we're going to need to explain that to the voters why that's necessary. And I think that at some point, maybe you go out and ask the voters for more money for certain things. But right now the voters think that we're not doing a good job of spending money. So we're going to have to have, this is Barbara Roberts trying to have a conversation with Oregon about budgets in 1990. We're going to need to have a conversation with Portland about budgets.
And so are there, are there non-essential services that you would identify right now for cuts?
I can't identify something that I think, yes, this is wasteful. We shouldn't be doing it. I do think that since we are not able to maintain our parks, that they're degrading. At a certain point, we need to acknowledge that we can't maintain them all. And that probably means at some point, unless we can find a new source of money closing some of them. And I do not like saying that, but I've got it with Harrison. It's, it's a matter of cutting public safety or cutting parks. Probably you have to cut parks. I mean, one thing that I, this might sound like pie in the sky, but one thing that I think you might do with parks is try to get more private investment in them. In New York City, philanthropists pay for Central Park. The city doesn't pay for it anymore. So I'd like to see some effort to see if for some of our, you know, jewel in the crown parks, we can get more private investment. But again, I don't want to say we should cut parks, but we've got three big things, police, fire and parks. Oh, one thing I do think, I mean, I didn't sign the pledge saying we need to fully fund Portland Street Response because I didn't know how to pay for it. But I do think that we need to have a conversation with the Police Bureau and PSR about do the police still have a bunch of patrol officers spending a bunch of their time going to calls that PSR could be handling? Bob Day has probably already done that analysis, but I haven't, haven't heard it. So that could be with some way to, to save money or at least make it possible to continue to add some more police officers is by having more of the non-crime calls taken by PSR. I don't know that that's true, but I want to, I want to know more.
Thank you. Angelina, any thoughts in terms of what you would do to address the city's budget crunch?
Yeah, I would love to see a more creative use of federal matching dollars for a lot of the big investment projects that we have. So for example, the Inflation Reduction Act has clauses that allow you to build, if you're building clean energy housing, the federal government can match those dollars so that we can get a new funding stream, which we desperately need. And if we are building clean energy housing, I think that that would fall under PSF. I don't want to see PSF used as a slush fund, considering that it's supposed to be for clean energy things and specifically focused on our BIPOC community here in Portland. I think oftentimes when we have anything set aside for our communities, that's the first thing to go. And there is a reason why we have such a low percentage of Black, Indigenous and Latino people living in the city of Portland. That is not a coincidence. So I certainly wouldn't want to use that as a slush fund. I want us to be more creative with our federal dollars and to lean into the relationships we have with our state legislature and with our congressional leaders to make sure that that happens. I think that for things like Portland Street Response, because that's very important to me. I think it's such an incredible and important service. And the fact that they have one operating vehicle right now is largely why they are not as effective as they could be. Is that we have a lot of backfilled positions in the Police Bureau that have not been filled for years. The money is sitting there waiting to be used. And I think that until the culture of the Police Bureau changes, we're probably not going to see a lot of Portlanders rushing to work in that bureau. So since we have seen that Portland Street Response alleviates police call load, since we have seen that 911, the majority of our emergency calls are actually calls for supportive services or for assistance. They're not calls to address crime or even violent crime. I think that we should focus on fully funding Portland Street Response with those extra dollars so that it can alleviate police call load and they can focus on what they're there to do, which is violent crime.
Jesse, how about you? How would you address the, the budget budget concerns we're facing for next year and funding public services, et cetera? You're on mute.
But first I take a big step back. We've got what about an $8.2 billion budget. It's interesting to note that about 6.1 of that is external. The rest of that is in, in internal transfers. And what I want to do is I want to get in there, but I am somebody that if I'm elected, I have made it clear that I hope to be as involved in the budget process as our next, as our first council president will have me. And for me, what I think that means is I go in there and I get to know everything as intimately as possible within the budget. But to answer your question specifically, there are really two things that are, that are boggling in my mind. Number one, in 2023, there were 1,000 less high-income earners in Portland than 2022. That means the city's losing a lot of revenue. So we need to stem that tide in order to make sure that we're able to shore up our budget. We are going to do that in a number of ways, improving public safety. We should really have a focus on downtown. Just to take that one small step further before I shift one last time. I think that for me, I've talked a lot about arts, art or, and music tourism specifically. I think there's an awful lot that the city can do to attract people to Portland to continue to spend, you know, tourist dollars here. And that's going to help in the long run. In terms of very specific things to look at, we're at an incredible moment. We're doing this, you know, everything, everywhere all at once moment where we are creating this new form of government. And as we are getting up to, as we are getting on boarded, as we're getting oriented rather, what we should do in this budget process is we should very specifically look at administrative redundancies. We've done a lot of things the same way because that's the way we've always done it. We're doing things different now. Let's take a good, hard look at that. Number two, along those same lines, we could look at reversing some of the outsourcing that we've been doing. That can not only save us money, it's also going to give us better metrics on how our money is spent moving forward. I'm proud that I've funded legislation to pay for things in Salem. Gosh, I remember this one program I got funded where it was great for the time and it was expected to be one, one-time money, but it got rolled up into the overall budget. And as far as I know it, that's still funded by the state today. We should at some point take a step back and look at some of the programs we're doing and just ask, you know, we did this, we started doing this in 2009 because an industrious young lobbyist came to us and said that we should. And it met a need then, does it meet a need now? And if not, that's where we could look at shifting things over. The list goes on. We could look at how we're managing our vehicles in the city fleet, seeing if that makes sense. A lot of folks, yeah, so PR, dollars we're spending on marketing, things along those lines. And then I think the last thing that we should do is we should have a, a consistent evaluation process before we expand any programs moving forward.
Great. Thank you. And Kesia, I think if you can address a budget question?
Sure can. So I appreciate this question because I spent about eight years working in the city's budget office. And so I budget is near and dear to my heart. I look through the budget lens with everything that I do, whether it's running a program or whether it's running one of the bureaus. You always have to look at your budget as your strategic and operational plan because it really is determining your priorities. And so I think as a elected body, the first thing that this group of 12 will need to do is probably in short order, and I think it's been mentioned, arrive at like, I'll just say a, a summary of a strategic plan in which we're looking at what are the critical priorities for us? Probably in the six-month tranche of time, one year, and then maybe looking at it two to five years. So that we can then hang budget decisions on that. I think that that has to be the lens that we're using as we're looking at budget constraints, which I see for the foreseeable future until we're able to stabilize our economy and then revitalize our economy. And then we may be able to see a turn of the tides and have resources restored. But while we're experiencing constraints, I think we do need to look at public-private partnerships where we can for key projects. I think there's opportunity for streamlining in the city if we're looking at some of the types of programs that exist in, in multiple bureaus. And a couple of our city bureaus. In a couple of our city bureaus, we have environmental programs, like they, they address regulatory environmental issues. And I see that as an opportunity to evaluate, can we consolidate? And if we do, do we find efficiencies? And perhaps cost savings. Same with our engineering depart, the, the engineering divisions across our bureaus. There's multiple bureaus that have their own engineering teams. I know that not all engineering is the same. However, there may be some economies of scale. And so I think in this time where we're looking at austerity and it's not my first go around with that. I've gone through it in two thousand and eight through two thousand and eleven in the city. We really do have to look at how we can be creative and how we can do things differently and what is most critical. And I agree with what Harrison and a couple others said is that we have to look at our core services and prioritize those. And it's not just public safety for me. It's, you know, we're mandated to provide water and sewer. We're mandated to provide the city's administrative functions and public safety and transportation. So these are all the things that I would prioritize. But I think that, that we can do things differently. And when you're in times of austerity or, or depressed economy, it does force you to do things differently and find innovation. So that's an upside to it.
Great, thank you. We are quickly running out of time. Let's see, and some of you have addressed this, but if we can do this as quickly as possible. Steve, if you can go first, what is your, what should be the next iteration of Portland Street Response?
Well, I think that like I said, like I said before, I think that we need to be looking at police calls and see to the extent to which it's true that the police are still spending a bunch of time responding to calls that really aren't about crime that Portland Street Response should probably handle. However, we also need to recognize that Portland Street Response, as Kessia alluded to this, is not a cure-all for anything because they do not generally wind up hooking people up with long-term services. There was an analysis that that PSU did that showed that after seventy-four hundred calls resulted in twenty people getting permanent housing, ten people getting temporary housing and twenty people being hooked up to primary care doctors. So it's a valuable tour in terms of sort of like taking calls off the, off the police. But until we have more services available, it has, it has limited results, unfortunately.
Thank you. Angelita, you've kind of addressed this, but do you want to talk anymore about what the next iteration should be?
Yeah, I think the plot for what Portland Street Response was actually created for has really been lost. When firefighters address a fire that happens and someone's house burns down, you're not getting their metric of if they save those people's lives based on whether or not they connected them to new housing, right? Because that's not their role. They're an emergency response system. And that is what Portland Street Response is supposed to be. When the city of Portland is under investigation by the Department of Justice because our police killed so many people that experienced mental health crisis on our streets, the point of Portland Street Response is to provide a non-armed mental health crisis response to those calls. And Portland Street Response, despite being greatly and largely inhibited by lacking resources, infrastructure, more vans to actually do quick time responses, they have done a good job with what they have so far. I think the future of Portland Street Response is going to be a fully funded program operating citywide, twenty-four hours a day, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. They need to be given the resources to give people lifesaving materials when they're out on the streets. And that also helps them build relationships with the unhoused people that they come in contact with or with anyone who's experiencing a mental health crisis. And without those relationships, you are not going to get people connected to services because those people already have a heavy mistrust of government and of government employees. So there are a lot of reasons why Portland Street Response is not fully functioning right now that are no fault of the prog, the program or the employees. The fault solely lies in them not being given the tools and the resources to do so. So to me, the for, the future of Portland Street Response is fully funded, operating citywide.
And would you support increasing their responsibilities? So for instance, you know, you mentioned the the DOJ investigation. There, some of those cases involve people who were armed. Is that a situation where you would want PSR there?
I think where I would want to expand Portland Street Response is for suicide calls or in people's private residences. That's something that they're not currently allowed to do. And that would be important. I think that the triaging for those types of situation is going to be on a case-by-case basis for the nine one one operator. Obviously, the nine one one operator has to determine if the person who has a weapon is either just, you know, a danger to themselves or a danger to others. And I think that that's going to vary in a case-by-case situation.
Thank you. Jesse, your thoughts on next iteration of PSR?
I think the folks with badges and guns are the most expensive solution and we're using them in way too many instances where they're not necessary. So we're having some growing pains, growing pains with street response. I think we need to continue to tinker to get it right. And in my tinker, and that does include transportation. So we're not just leaving folks where they're at.
And you mean taking them to services or?
Services, correct.
Kessia, your thoughts?
So I think my, I think, I know my thoughts about PSR and I've had a lot of experience with this because PSR was underneath Portland Fire and Rescue and I was the deputy director for Portland Fire. And I will say that PSR wasn't initially set up for success in the way that it was developed because it wasn't scoped properly when it was developed and it should have never been underneath Portland Fire and Rescue. That wasn't the right home for it. It ended up being where there was limited funding and Portland Fire and PSR both were experiencing constraints and having to figure out how the funding was going to be allocated between the two programs in a constraint environment. And in reality, PSR has value doing the mission and, and the roles that it's been given, as does Portland Fire and Rescue. And I think that there's just different lanes. And I, and I will say this between police, fire, PSR and the other services that are alternative response models. I think that they all have a place in the ecosystem for public safety. They all have different lanes, so it's not an either or, it's an and. And it helps us as a public safety system provide better services and be more effective. So I think when we talk about this, we take money from police and we give it to PSR. I think that police has its line of doing work and PSR, if it's scoped properly, also has one. And ultimately, the public will be receiving better services, better response times. And I think that that's the, the future, but we have to be ready to invest in it in that way. And so that's what I'll say. It's not, we're not looking at cost savings here. We're looking at doing things better. And just real quick, I think specifically, we do need to get to a twenty-four seven model for PSR. I think that that comes when we can access Medicaid funding that will support the program. And that probably looks like expanding the scope of the program and, and looking at transporting as well.
Thank you. Harrison?
Yeah, I'm not hostile towards PSR. I think in theory, it's, it's a wonderful program. It alleviates a burden on police officers who are not most perfectly tailored response for someone having a mental health crisis in many cases. But PSR, as it currently exists, is, is not really worth it from my perspective. You know, they, they kind of, at this point, they're limited to distributing granola bars and blankets. I think we need to expand their capabilities if we're going to keep the program. Jesse mentioned transportation. That's, that's critical. And I do want to caution, you know, Angelita mentions allowing them to go into people's homes. I don't think that's a good idea for anyone involved. It sounds like a government intrusion, but I do want to say I am open to the concept of PSR if it's, if it's re-tinkered to be more effective.
So in terms of going into someone's home, I mean, police do that.
Yeah, I think I'd be hesitant to send a a PSR employee into confined space where someone is having a mental health crisis.
Let's see, I wonder if we can do this real fast. Let's see. In terms of the, and sorry, I think this would be Angelita. In terms of the relationship with the county, what do you think has been sort of at the core, the core problem with it? And what, what would you do to improve it or to improve the results that you're seeing from the, the Joint Office of Homeless Services, for instance?
You know, I'm not sure what the core issues are between the city and county as far as if it's personality differences, if people are having more like election-related fights. I think a lot of these things tend to be, in my experience, hot potatoes where people want to pass on the blame because they don't want to be in trouble for something when their, their ballots are showing up. I think that having very more clearly defined roles for what the county and the city do so that we are not tossing things like a hot potato and making sure that the public fully understands the county is in charge of public health. The city is in charge of some public safety and some housing. I think that would go a long way. And as far as the joint office goes, I think there's a lot of people that are saying we need to just pull out or completely dismantle it. And I think it is much harder to create a new infrastructure than it is to try to improve one that exists. I still firmly believe that the city and county, especially with a new council, can get to a point of working more collaboratively, collaboratively together. And I'm excited to help make that happen. But I think that one of the key inefficiencies that I see in the joint office is the fact that we have millions of dollars left on the table that are unused. And when we are having a housing and homelessness crisis, we need every single dollar to be used. So what I would like to see is that, especially because there was an influx of federal dollars and things like that, most agencies were not prepared to handle that influx of money. We need to hire a lot more staff. We're going to be equipped and ready to actually deliver the federal dollars, get those grant dollars out the door and make sure that we're using every resource available to make that happen.
Great, thank you. Jesse, it's city-county relationship and, and what would you do or change about the joint office?
Sure, I think the city-county, I referenced this earlier. I think the city-county relationship seems like it's at an all-time low. So there's only up to go there. I'm proud to have been supported by a number of current and future county commissioners. And for me, the, the, I think that this is just about being human, meeting folks where they're at, treating them like a partner, not like an adversary. And I think that that's going to go a long way. I'm mindful of the fact that, that the county building is about halfway in between my short bike commute to city hall from my house. And I could imagine being there an awful lot, making sure those relationships are shored up. I know it's going to be incumbent upon our council president and mayor to have good, solid working relationships with the county chair as well. And with, yeah, with the joint office, the way that I have, the way that I'll say it is, we should work with the county as if they are a partner, not an adversary, because they are a partner. They have not been firing on all cylinders of late. And the way the city has dealt with that, I think, has not been acceptable. I think the city's refusal to do an ongoing contract in twenty twenty-two and again in twenty twenty-three, only do you want in twenty twenty-four, but to do a look back period when three quarters of the city council are running for mayor is really just exemplifies that point. So the city's got to be better.
Thank you. Kessia, your thoughts on the city-county relationship?
So I've worked in city-county for twenty years and over time, there have been some of the elected bodies that have worked really well together on both sides of the river. And then we've been experiencing challenges in recent years. You can say maybe it's the cult of personality and, and that folks just don't get along. But what I do see is with the changeover on both the city and county elected bodies, that we have a tremendous opportunity for us to forge a new working relationship between the city and county and come into alignment about how we're going to address our most pressing community crises that we share. One of them, of course, that we've been talking about throughout this interview is homelessness and the impacts of homelessness. And what I see there is that we will be able to define more clearly how we're going to work together and how we're going to get to our shared solutions. I think when it comes down to delineating specific roles between the city and county, I'm not sure that we are in that space anymore because I feel like the public looks toward government and the city in particular wants to have solutions and they don't care who's providing it. They don't care if it's the city, the county, metro, but they just want to have the services. And I think we need to understand that's what the public is expecting of us. So we need to be mature and we need to be able to work with our partners to be able to develop those relationships to work together and specifically around Joint Office of Homeless Services. I think that we are getting to a better place. I know that they are listening to the fact that we have had issues with the lack of responsiveness and getting money out the door. And that's changing. So I, I feel like we're, we're moving in the right direction. And with our new elected bodies, I think there's tremendous opportunity, as I mentioned.
Great, thank you. Harrison?
Yeah, like Kessia said, the, the relationship is, is the result of the people in elected office. We'll see what that looks like after January first, but in recent years, I don't feel like the county has upheld their responsibilities to the city. I'm, you know, proud of the way that as a part of the Gonzalez administration, we have been a little bit more assertive with the county. We've gotten them to stop buying new tents and tarps, which the city was paying to clean up. We've pressured them into converting to the one-to-one AMR staffing model, which is, which was vital. I don't know why it took so long, but what we're finding is that with a little bit of assertiveness, we are finding positive results. The current ninety-day IGA has conditions built in. So that's something I think we need to keep in mind moving forward, the expectation of conditions that are going to be resulting on certain metrics. So yeah, I don't want to enter an adversarial relationship. I'm optimistic that the people coming into office on January one will be willing and able to communicate effectively with one another, but the city does need to set expectations.
Great, thank you. And Steve?
First, I just want to jump back for a second to Angelita saying that the job of the police is to address violent crime. I actually think they should address property crimes too. And one of the problems we have now is that there's virtually no detectives to investigate property crimes. To the extent that we have the financial ability to do that, like to revolve that capacity. As far as the city and the county, actually something you do hear on the campaign trail is people complaining about the city and county not getting, getting along. I think that is improving somewhat in part frankly, because it used to be people barely knew what the county did. They blamed the city for everything. So now they blame the county too, so they're more in the same boat. I think that the most critical thing is to develop a shared approach to homelessness, which is the highest profile issue. I'd like to see the city and county do like joint budget briefings where we hear collectively from the joint office, here's how money's being spent, here's that being changed, here's how that's changed. And people ask questions and express views together in public. So people, the public sees what the discussion is between the city and county in that issue. And individual relationships with county commissioners can be important too. I've got, I've known Julia Brem Edwards for twenty-five years. I'm proud to have her as our county commissioner. And I think one thing that this district form of government will do with the city is make, ride for obvious contacts within district lines between city councilors and county commissioners.
Great, thank you. We don't have very much, well, we have no time left, but I'm still going to ask one more quick question that I'm hoping you guys can just take like twenty seconds or thirty seconds to, to answer. And basically it's, you know, who will you be on this twelve, like on this council? Like why? What is it that you will bring? What characteristic, what quality that makes you a must-have on, on this twelve-person council? And Jesse, if you can go first on this. You're on mute. You'll be the council member who's on mute. You, you're still on mute, unfortunately.
I'll get it right someday. I'm going to be known for the guy that never puts himself off mute, apparently. I, I think I'll be known for somebody known as somebody who is able to work with the polls. I've, I've always shown in my career that I'm able to work with folks that I may not agree with. And I think that's a skill that we really need right now.
Thank you. Kessia, how about you?
I'll be a stabilizing force on our new elected body because I've got the years of experience working through elected bodies for the city of Portland and Multnomah County, as well as my operational experience working at both city and county. So I'll be able to bring in that operational focus and pragmatic and strategic perspective. So that, that actually is what I hope my hallmark of my administration as the city councillor will be, in addition to promoting good governance.
Great, thank you. Harrison?
I'm a quiet leader. I spend more time listening and thinking than speaking. I'm paying attention to what's wrong on the streets of Portland. I'm listening to people and their problems and I would like to And I would like to legislate, uh, from a place that's divorced from ideology and is just geared towards uh, getting results based on what people need.
Great, thank you. Steve?
Uh, well, I think that I'll be the grizzled, I would be the grizzled old veteran who plays the role that Unray Guadala used to play with the Golden State Warriors, uh, sort of helping keep people focused on an even keel. Um, I think that, um, it's, like I said before, it'd be useful to have somebody who has the humility that comes with experience and letting people know, look, we're not going to come up with some grand plan to solve all our problems at once. We, what we need to do is focus on some specific realistic things and try to move the ball forward. Um, and, uh, I think that, um, let's see, I had something else to say, but I can't remember what it was.
Thank you.
I, anyway, anyway, that's, uh, and I will, I will try to do my, I think that Jesse said this too. I think that I'm naturally somewhat of a link between the more lefty and the less lefty people in the council. So I will try to use that role to keep people talking to each other.
Thank you. And Angelita?
I guess I would first say that I don't think anything is divorced from ideology. We're all pushing an ideology one way or another, based on our lived and political experience. And everything is politics and it's all tied to the personal. So, um, I think my role in city council would be to always ask who is not in the room and whose voice is not being heard and why. I think that would be my main role. I also think that during a time of new governance where so many things are going to be changing, I plan to continue being a liaison to the public and walking them through that very complicated and difficult process so that they are aware of what's happening, why things are taking a while and where they can expect to have their feedback impact all of the things that we are going to do moving forward.
Great. Thank you, everyone. This was a fantastic discussion. We really appreciate your coming and, um, answering our questions. Um, we'll be in touch if we have any other questions. I think we're aiming for a week from Sunday to, to figure all this out, but thank you.